Let's do it. All right, Bannock County Commissioners are in session Thursday, July 31st. It's a beautiful day. With us today, we're going to start off with Wes Jones, Office of Emergency Management. So we're going to change the schedule just a little bit, give some people some time to get through security this morning. So Wes, go ahead.
Okay, so I was requested to resubmit this rental and lease agreement for utilization of Southeast Idaho Council Governments facilities. And so what I'm now routing around is an updated lease agreement in which SCOG has signed that, and then they plugged in some tentative dates for the contract to start, begin, and end date. The one thing that we plugged in there is a, for this first one, is the date goes until September 30th. So it'll coincide with our current county financial schedules. But the thing to keep in mind with our Homeland Security Grants, we can use these funds for the duration of the grant. And the grant isn't limited to a one year. It can be two to three years. So we can use the one grant cycle for multiple years. A good example is we just closed out our 2022 Homeland Security Grant, and it's 2025. So one of the things that I think it's probably important that we do is we need to take a look back to why we're going in the directions that we're going. This position, the emergency management position, was a part-time position in Bannock County. And because of that, a lot of the funds that were provided through FEMA and Homeland Security dispersed through the state would go to Bannock County and would return those funds. So there'd be anywhere from $46,000 to $50,000 every year that was not utilized to build capacity within Bannock County as a whole. The State of Idaho came down and met with the Commissioners and wanted this position to be a full-time position in which we could provide support and guidance and assistance to some of the contiguous counties who were less fortunate as Bannock County is, based upon population, skill sets, and different things. And the smaller counties desperately need some guidance, support, and assistance to move forward because they're part-time positions. And where Bannock County at that time was the fourth-largest county in the state, the recommendation was to make this a full-time position and move forward to increase that potential for regionalization and capacity building within Southeast Idaho. Since that time, I was hired, and that was, and Ernie, you probably remember this, that was one of the key questions that was brought up during my interview, if I could work and build towards regionalization. And I said, yes, most definitely, because I've had experience doing that. In 1991, I put together a reciprocal firefighting agreement with Idaho National Lab and Department Six, Region Six Transportation, which included all the Southeast Idaho firefighting departments and Idaho National Lab. That was put together in order to consolidate and coordinate and make sure that we have cross-border communication, and each party was supporting and helping each other. That was a dual effort between myself and Fred Judd with the Caribou National Forest. So that MOU that was put in place for regionalization back in 1991 is now grown into the Southeast Idaho Fire Chief's Association. So you have over, I think, 48 different fire departments that buy into that regional concept. And the regionalization is the only way that we're going to move forward effectively and efficiently in a very cost-effective manner. And one of the things we initially started out with was the working in with the Disaster Response Complex in Idaho State University. And at the time, President Satterley was all in favor of everything that we were doing and going towards that regionalization. We also take a look at having a facility put up at the fairgrounds. That was also, went on the wayside. And then, so the next option was putting together this opportunity with Southeast Idaho Council Governments in which we can start working with a lot of those similar organizations that provide like services to the communities. So it's a benefit to everyone across the board. So that's the reasons why we continue to work towards the regionalization. It gets a lot of mileage. Even your IT Director, Adam McKinney, is using that for public safety answering points, the dispatch programs, and the sharing of the networks and infrastructure. It's beneficial. So that's the reason why we're kind of doing a lot of the stuff that we do in moving forward. So with that being said, questions on the rental agreement?
Well, I haven't changed my opinion yet. One, I don't think that facility is the best facility. I don't think there's parking there for adequate parking if we had an emergency and needed to have that as a center. The $900 of rent, where is that money going now?
As stated previously, that's coming from Homeland Security Grants. That $900, where it's not identified specifically where to go for a specific project, what we work from is projects or budgets from the state. We identify those areas that we're going to address. Normally, we have a project or a bucket, if you will, in which we park funds for community awareness campaigns, for training, for interoperability, for the EOC operations, and I can't remember the fifth one. But we do that to meet the intent of the core capabilities that is required by the state and which is also required by federal funds. The funding that we received is based upon the target capability list in those 32 core capabilities. So that list comes out with all those capabilities. We will park funds in that immediate area. And as the Public Safety Departments request equipment, training, or support in those needs, we facilitate and give them the funds. For example, we'll have that training fund that's established out there. And we average about three training courses per year in which we pay for the training and bring in the contractors, and we do everything else, very similar to what we did at South County. So South County is probably the 12th time that we've sponsored that training and helped that entity provide that training to various jurisdictions because that's how we build the capacity, knowing they don't have the funds, and that's why those grants are there.
So I don't think you really answered my question there, but you're telling me that, like the event you just did down at Downey, you won't be able to do because we're going to pay rent now?
No, I'm not telling you that at all.
Well, I just asked you where the $900 coming from. What are you using it for now? Because we're not giving any money back to the state right now.
We don't have $900 identified specifically for a project. And for this rental agreement, the rental agreement is identified through the EOC operations. So saying we have $900 over here, we're not taking it away from anything. It's not obligated to a location.
Oh, I can see that, but we've been spending the money. And now you're going to take it from wherever you were spending it and put it towards rent. That's all I'm saying.
So the $900 bucks a month, how are you using that currently? Or are you using it?
Right now, we still have a lot of funds that we haven't spent. And what I want to emphasize is, we don't say this amount of money is specific for this. So if we have interoperability funds for radio communication, that's a big budget amount. So each one specific to the concerns and the needs of Pocatello Police Department, the Sheriff's Office, Chubbuck Police. Once they identify what their needs are, or whether they need support and assistance, we'll pull from that and put it in there to support and help them. So we're not identifying what their needs are, they are. And once they determine what their needs are, we can support them and help them out.
Well, the second part of it is, when we was talking about the forensic pathology. I mean, you come back and you says, you never rent. You build your own. You do your own. And we're still in the process of building, or got a project going on at the coroner's office, the current office you're at. But I still think that would be a better facility for the overall project.
But we're a year away from that, so this will give us an opportunity to try that for a year and see if it does build the capacity as proposed. And the reason we asked Wes to come back is Commissioner Bullock went down, busy with SCOG, got some information, and he was comfortable going forward. So maybe at this point in time, we wait until he comes back and then we can run the discussion.
I would suggest that if you want this to move forward, you wait till Commissioner Bullock's here, because it's not going to move forward today.
See, and that's interesting about the activities you're talking about at the Public Works compound. So evidently, I hear through the grapevine and the rumor mill that you're going to expand that facility. And I think Hal and Kyle, and I think probably the coroner, provided input on what their needs were. I wasn't even included in that conversation. So to identify what our needs would be and how to work in, it would've been nice. So I'm thinking, well, if we weren't included in that project, perhaps we need to...
We haven't advanced that project far enough that you can't be included.
Well, at this time, we'll just have you come back on Tuesday. We'll finish the discussion.
Next Tuesday?
Yeah.
Sweet.
Okay.
Any other questions?
That's it for now, I think, unless you've got any others?
No.
Okay. Rodney, are all your people here? Mayor, it looks like you made it through security.
I made it through security. It was tough.
Yeah. Good. Come on up. You guys are next.
Thank you for letting us be late.
Well, it wasn't your fault, so...
No, it wasn't. So as I tell people at the grocery store, never get in line behind me, because something always happens in front of me. So, well, I'm Mayor Vicki Lyon, and I know the two of you, and I'm not sure if I've met you, Mr. Dixon or Commissioner Dixon?
I'm the clerk.
Oh, well, okay.
He doesn't want to be a commissioner.
Oh, I see county clerk. I'm not tall enough to see over that one in front of me, so...
Let me get those out of the way.
That's why I haven't met you before in that capacity. So anyways, well, as you all know, we're from Lava Hot Springs, and we've always had some growing pains, and we're addressing our area of impact. And we are currently trying to expand and meet the needs of development. And one of the biggest things that we have an issue with is, you know, everybody working on the same page as far as ordinances. So if somebody, you know, a developer comes and is going to be out in the county, well, chances are that sooner or later, they'll be in the city. We've expanded our sewer line to the north and the east, east and north. And so there's, you know, chance for expansion out that way. But we're really, we really want to work with the county, and I think we've shown that over the last couple of years. Our administration has changed, and some of the philosophies that we had in the past are different. But we want to have controlled growth, and we want to have a participatory growth. So we want to participate with the county and, of course, with any developers that come by. So I don't know. Anything else you guys want to add?
Go ahead and introduce yourselves, Mark and Rodney.
Okay, I'm Mark Lowe. I'm the Chairman of the Planning and Zoning for the City of Lava. And I think, you know, to reiterate what Mayor said, you know, the city's intent is really to work cooperatively with the county. So we've got a smooth transition for those properties adjacent to the city and the area of city impact, once they do get developed or grow or whatever, that there's a seamless transition when that gets annexed into the city instead of the, you know. We've had conflict in the past, the city allowing, county allowing things that the city doesn't, the city restricting things that county doesn't, or regulating those. And we just think that it's really important that we work cooperatively with the county and that smooth transition for everybody involved, you know, for those developers and citizens that are developing their ground adjacent to the city. So, you know, we just want to establish and reiterate that we do have that attitude of a good cooperative working relationship with the county. Thank you.
I think another thing to add, too, is the short-term rental issue that we're facing. As you know, the Supreme Court did not uphold the original decision by the district courts. And so they've gone back to, basically, short-term rentals can run amok. And so we have a moratorium right now on short-term rentals. And so we're working on changing our ordinances. That's what was not upheld, was our ordinance. And so we're working on that so that we do have some viability. Because if we lose all of our housing, I mean, we've already lost a public school. We've turned into a charter school, which I have no problem whatsoever, and I totally support the charter school. But people should have a choice, not be that only option in town. And without a school in town, what do you have? You don't have a community. How do we teach these little kids community? But we're losing all of our housing to short-term rentals. So then we don't have people with kids, people that are raising families. And we're, you know, we're losing our identity as a city. So that's why we are really working hard to, you know, be proactive and, you know, come up with ways to save our city, basically. Rodney?
Commissioners, Rod Birch, Contract Planner with the City of Lava Hot Springs. And my piece of this is probably dug down into the weeds of what the legislators ask the Commissioners to do relative to the area of city impact. And as a group, we acknowledge the good conversations we've had with your staff as we've gone back and forth on what that footprint, geographic footprint may be. The current proposal from your staff, we're in agreement upon, it's a significant reduction of our current area of city impact. We see that. We agree with it completely. I think our ask of the Commissioners today is consideration on the ordinance or the agreement between the city and the county in really three key areas there. One, we would like to have some combined effort. As we're just starting through our comp plan revision, knowing that the county has just finished one, we would like to have a combined effort to make sure that our comp plans align in that new geographic area of city impact. The second is, we would ask that you give serious consideration to a unique set of ordinances for Lava Hot Springs area of city impact. As we've talked with staff, and I'll put words in the mouth, it doesn't sound like that's too big of an ask from a staff level to develop those. We just feel like inside that area, we may have tremendous benefit to both entities if we have a specific set of ordinances. And the third is that we would ask for any application that occurs inside the area of city impact, that that be a joint planning commission, and that we would add two members of our planning commission to your five-member commission and deal with any of those applications that may occur inside the area of city impact. We included a lot of information in the pack, and I don't know if you had a chance to go through it. The goal there was to help you as the Commissioners understand Lava's commitment to grow effectively, but to, as Mayor Vicki has indicated, to have a, we have a different approach to growth from Lava than we have historically. And we want to do it right. We want to do it in partnership with the county. We want to do it in accordance with state law. So we have a draft annexation plan assembled. Our water and wastewater plans identify our areas of expansion, which align with the proposed map that your staff has put before us. Just want to, we want to share with you that we're preparing for that growth. We know that five-year limit is key in the area of city impact, but we're actively pursuing that. We're spending $2.5 million next year to expand our water system to the West in preparation. And so it will then encompass those proposed areas. Happy to visit, add any of that in detail with you, but mostly just wanted to share that with you so you see that we're taking this effort very seriously. We're doing all that we can to, from the city's standpoint, to do our part to ensure that we have safe development, effective development, and hopefully in a good partnership with the county.
Okay. Staff, thoughts? Rebuttal? Agreement, concurrence?
Real quickly, Hal Jensen, Planning Director. Relative to two members on Planning Council that would represent the City of Lava, on any issues that were within their ACI, et cetera, that would need to be reviewed through legal against the state statute.
Let me just say, no. Plain and simple on that one. No. We're not putting two people on the council. It's a public hearing. You have the opportunity to come and communicate. But this is a volunteer group on our council, and I don't see changing around the area. Your city compared to all the other small cities either. So that one, that is a plain no to me.
I spent about two hours going through your packet last night, and so I have very similar reservations with that. To me, that joint planning commission gets into some taxation without representation because Lava would have an extra voice that the rest of the county wouldn't have. And so I felt like I'm in agreement there, that is a no on that.
And quickly, that said, since I have been Director and in that capacity for public hearings, right now, we have a council that is as evenly distributed and representing the county as we have ever had, from almost every corner of the county.
We've done that very deliberately.
Very deliberately, and it's very balanced. And I would feel that that would be an unfair representation of a particular area of the county.
But we're only talking about the Lava ACI issues, though.
It's not the state statute. I would have great concerns, Mark, about how that would be, because you are asking for something, and we could go down the path and have two from Downey, and we could have two from Aramo, and that becomes a logistical nightmare for us conducting meetings.
But Downey, Aramo, McCammon really aren't requesting any kind of an ACI.
But the problem is, the decisions we make in your ACI impact everybody. And so that's why I was talking about the taxation without representation, because you would get an unequal voice that could impact the county that way.
Well, and the courts have already said that your influence is to the city limits. The ACI is the county's.
Right.
And so that's given you more influence in the ACI than anybody else. And so I'm just not in favor of doing that.
And then, the other item Rodney brought up, the issue of potentially having a joint ordinance between county, city, and the ACI. I would make no recommendation. I would basically, from our standpoint, remain neutral until county legal had an opportunity to review whether or not that would even be able to be held up in the courts.
And I struggled with that one as well. Again, I don't see how we can fine-tune that ordinance just to save this specific area and not have it be a broader brush and impact the entire county. More than happy to have the discussions to fine-tune the ordinance that we have that might work for you, but as far as a specific one that says in Lava's ACI, I just, I don't see that happening.
And that said, Lava finds itself in a very unique position in light of the fact that there was some, for lack of a better description, industry, which was agriculture, which supported that particular area along the pool. And as times have grown and things have changed, they have experienced a virtual swing in what is the industry that supports Lava, and that is recreation. And there's only so much population base within the city that supports all of that recreation industry, which then has now affected, as Mayor Lyons has said, whether or not they have sufficient patrons to occupy a school. They're in a different, they're in a different spot than any other community in all of the county.
Absolutely.
We understand that. But yet, in the same token, until there is industry that pushes growth, everything that they have to the north, well, north is going to be business, east is going to be business, but recreation, and to the west is where they have the opportunity to grow on a residential aspect. I will share with you that we've been in conversation with the city relative to a potential large growth to the south, up towards Thunder Mountain. And they are in that conversation, and we made our recommendation that that should be part of the ACI because of those ongoing conversations that have been for probably the last two to four years, off and on with this particular developer. So, long story short, I am content with the ACI, what has gone on in regards to conversations back and forth. The items that they specifically asked for, I believe, need, depending on what the Commission's position is, would need more study from a legal standpoint. Other than that, that's my opinion.
And again, like I said, I spent quite a bit of time on this last night, looking at it, trying to come up with some things. And you said something interesting, Mayor Lyons, and I'd like to explain a bit more. But what type of growth are you specifically looking for? Because I look at your population over the last five to 10 years, and it's been declining.
Yes.
So when we talk about, and I, for me, from my perspective, I think Lava's in that transitory phase from being a nice little community. And I grew up in McCammon, and I love Lava. But you're now turning into this resort community compared to what you used to be. So there's that growing pain. And I'm very sympathetic to the loss of population and the loss of the schools. So help me understand, what growth are you looking for to facilitate what you're asking?
Well, I think the housing that we have in town is definitely being replaced as short-term rentals. So that pushes our developments to the west. And we've got, we have one that we are actively speaking with, and it's, what is it, 350 homes right at this point, between townhomes and different, different living situations. And so, but I mean, that's, our growth is being pushed out of city limits.
And is that development geared towards more the timeshares and condos and things like that?
Nope, single family.
Permanent residence?
Absolutely. Yep.
We already have two active applications that are occurring. One of them's almost finalized, one's in the initial stage. And one of them, first one is affordable housing. So they're small units for purchase in a partnership with the city. We're pursuing affordable housing solutions. The second is outside, it would be a new annexation, and the developers, owners there are focused on single-family, local homeownership, restrictions of short-term rentals in their CCNRs. So it's, it probably has the greatest value for us to grow and bring families back into our community.
You know, part of the industrial growth, if you want to call it that, is really is a bedroom community. With the advent of four-lane highway going from Soda Springs to wherever else you want to go, you know, Lava becomes more and more attractive. It is, it's a beautiful locale. It has a lot of offerings that the other small communities don't have, so far as services rendered, plus recreational opportunities that make it attractive for families to live there. It's just the affordability of the housing coming into it. So if you get these developments coming in that are owner-occupied designated, I think you will see that growth, but it's not going to be within the current city boundaries now. And that's where we have to have that, that working relationship with the county of how do we, how do we control that growth, or promote that growth, or coordinate that growth?
Responsible growth, I think, is what we like to say.
Yeah. The legislature, active steps in really thwarting the growth out into the agricultural areas. There's, was a law that just went into practice now that, you know, you can get a well, but it's only for domestic use. It's not for, you can't irrigate with it. And by their term of irrigation, it's lawns, gardens. So that's pushing more and more toward, you've got to be on those city services. So that's going to restrict our expansion out into the... So, that's going to restrict our expansion out into the hinterlands.
That was one of the questions I had last night. I looked at your proposed wells, and I was excited to see that. I wasn't aware that you had the two and a half million scheduled for some of that, but your, most of your growth is more towards Thunder Mountain and the golf course and stuff. Isn't that kind of where you're talking about with this new development?
I think it would be west, more, more lawns around.
So, one is south. You're, you're correct. And then the other is directly to the west.
So the new wells you're proposing, you're, would theoretically service?
For the west.
Service those?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have any other questions?
Well, and you've talked about it, I mean, services, sewer and water. I mean, every community has those concerns, and...
Our sewer capacity, we're, we're well within our means with our sewer capacity. And water, we're actively working on the water infrastructure.
I just look at, like Incan, they did an annex property in that they should have because of water and wells, or water and sewer. So that's, so honestly, in my opinion right now is, is if you're happy with the ACI, we're happy with the ACI. We go with that, and then we work together and communicate. And like I say, our meetings are open meetings, so everybody has the opportunity to come and communicate.
The problems that we run into is the, is the, like I said, the conflict between the city ordinances and the county ordinances on that development in that, in that transitory area.
And that's where I just told you, the courts have already said this is the city limits, and this is where the county is. So to make separate ordinance for every city, I'm not willing to do that.
But in, in light of that, I also would instruct Planning Development to keep that open dialogue with you, to help facilitate that, because we are focusing on affordable housing, all about that. So what can we do? And Hal and I have had several conversations of what can we do to spur affordable housing and help that? If we can do something to help facilitate that, help Lava regain some of the population, all about that. But again, I agree, statutorily, our hands are a little bit tied right now, but we can work together somehow to help that grow. And as far as the comp plan align, I think our comp plan is broad enough that it allows you guys to tailor yours to fit in very nicely so that we can function within that buffer area and make it work. So I don't, I don't think we're very far off, but the Joint Planning Commission, that's a no. And the unique ordinance, I think that's a no. But as far as everything else, I would think we want to keep that dialogue, help you guys grow responsibly in the way that we can.
And I think the commissioners, I've heard you, I've heard you speak to, and we're aware that we can revisit these issues.
Correct.
They're living documents.
And so, I guess I would just publicly ask that as we go through our comp plan, our ordinances, and start this annexation process, that if we see things pop up, that we're welcome back to have additional conversations with the commissioners.
Hundred percent.
Absolutely. For me, for me, the big one is to see your, your water grow. Once, once I see some more movement that way, I'm much more willing to have a conversation about moving that ACI and doing some things, because I know that's an expensive move. And if you can't move the water, then you're not going to be able to expand like you want. So, once we see some things that way, definitely love you to come back and chat.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Hal. Thank you, Tristan.
Fred? Bringing Emily. Emily's joining me today. And Ralph, she did a lot of the, the day-to-day work on the audit, so she can back me up, as Christie knows, and of course Christie and Jason can keep us in line. This, hopefully this is much more exciting than the rest of the topics today. You know, the finances are, you know, how do you beat that, right? So, my name's Fred Goodworth. I'm a partner at Whipfleet in Idaho Falls, and we're, we appreciate the opportunity to work with the county on your annual financial statement audit. We actually do two, there's two components to that. One is a, is a probably a little smaller component. We do a compliance examination as well, because in fiscal '24, you still had some ARPA funds that you were spending. And so we did the compliance examination. We issued both those reports at the same time. And of course, the bigger one is the comprehensive annual financial report that this, that the county puts together. Christie and her team, and Jason as well, so. I'll probably, there's a couple, a couple different ways we can go. We can hit some highlights in the financial report, or if you've seen that, you don't need to do that. I can just go over some of the required communications. It's kind of your preference.
I'd just go over the communications, because each of us has a copy of the financial report.
Yep. That sounds great to me. We can keep it short and simple.
Yeah.
And, okay, so, so just, short and simple is basically just a reminder of what our responsibilities are. We, we need to be independent of the county, and we come in and we perform financial statement audit. And then we give an opinion, actually multiple opinions, on, on the financial statements. Our, our opinions, we give an opinion on each major fund of the county. We give an opinion on the government-wide statements. And we give an opinion on the, all the non-majors combined, in total. So that it's a multiple, it's a multiple opinion unit that we provide when we give our opinion on, on the county's financial records. Happy to report that our opinion is a clean opinion or an unmodified opinion. And that's what you want. You want to see that from your auditors. So, and then we also give, in addition to that opinion, we give a report on internal controls. And, and, and whether there's any, if we uncover any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in the audit. Happy to report that we didn't report any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. So that's also good news for the county. Let's see, other required communications. We're required to communicate their, you know, their qualitative and quantitative aspects of the audit. There are estimates involved in the financial statements. You know, your pension obligation is an estimate. Your depreciation allowances are estimates. The county updated their fixed, their property management system this year, and that took some, quite a bit of time. And, but those are estimates, and there were some changes in some original estimates as a result of that, as a result of updating to the newer system. But that, that was all positive. We actually had a recommendation last year on the fixed assets and the property equipment, so that was implemented. But there are estimates involved. There really weren't any new standards, other than a standard, more of a reporting standard that was adopted this last year, and that was, and actually implemented because you did have some changes. One of the, one of the new standards was a standard on, let me get a word here, accounting for, accounting for changes and error corrections. And we actually implemented that the first year, because we did have some changes there.
On that note, we have three for this year.
Three new standards?
Yes.
Yes. There's some coming up, isn't there? But your landfill, your landfill, there's other estimates. Your landfill, you know, closure cost is an estimate. You know, there's a number of estimates in the financial statement. So just pointing that out. Happy to report there were no difficulties encountered in the audit. Corrected and uncorrected misstatements. We do have a few, what we consider uncorrected misstatements. It's, so there's some receivables that, and one liability of payroll accrual that the county's consistent with how they recoordinate, so the change is not material year to year. But from a true perspective, true cutoff perspective, there are some receivables that we believe should be reflected. And there's also a true-up of one of the payables, payroll liability payable that should be done. It's not material. Management signs off that it's immaterial. So it's, it's your decision, it's the county's decision if they want to make those changes or not. Disagreements? We didn't have any disagreements with management, so happy to report that. We have to, we have to disclose to you if we do. And if we're aware of any consultations outside of, you know, we call it opinion shopping. If management doesn't like the opinion that we've given them, and they go out to get another opinion, we have to report that. Happy to report that there are none of those that we're aware of. No other findings or issues. I think everything else, that basically covers required communication. Maybe I'll touch, I'll jump to an item that we talked about last year, which was the cash reconciliations, and one of our major recommendations. That's in process, but it wasn't completed for the audit, so we still have some work to do there. I don't know what month you're, you're up to at this point. You know, Christie?
I've got a check.
Okay.
But basically what's happened is, with the transition to Tyler, Tyler changed completely how we clear checks. When you write a check, that money is taken from the fund and moved to a cash pool. That is not what I wanted when we set it up. It's what happened. And so now we're not balancing the treasure like we used to. So that's, we're working towards that. We had to go in and manually clear a bunch of checks that should have auto-cleared because they forgot to click a box. So that's created some extra work. We're working with Jen and Ms. Dune. I doubt we'll have it ready by September, but it is a work in progress that we're closer than we were when we implemented Tyler.
So, you know, just kind of a precursor, in my mind, if that's not caught up this next year, it will rise to a level of material weakness or significant deficiency. We've just left it as a management letter comment, but, you know, we didn't, you know, we didn't move it there. The difference has grown from last year to this year. The difference we're off between, you know, the general ledger and what's being reported. So that difference has grown, and if that continues without reconciling, I think we're going to, we've got to report it as a material weakness next year. You know, so I think that needs to be a priority. I know we're late in the game, but it's like, by the time we get the audit done, if you're caught up through September, you know, there's still time. Even though your year-end's closing, you can do it after the fact. But I think that needs to be a high priority, in my opinion, for the county. I think it just has to happen, because our difference has grown, and we're still not caught up on those reconciliations, so.
And it is a priority.
Yeah.
Just have to get the audit done first.
Yeah. The other one's small. I mean, the receivables, you may bite the bullet some year and just say, hey, you know, we know it's going to take, you know, take an effect on that one year, but after that, everything will be consistent. You know, I'd probably encourage you to, to go ahead and make some of those adjustments. They're, they're not huge, but it'd be nice not to have a summary of past adjustments, things that we're passing on every year.
And basically what Fred's talking about is, right now, we accrue the pay period, but we don't do it as of September 30. We just do it by the pay period.
Okay.
So that's what he's talking about as far as the payroll side.
Yeah, payroll side. And then I think it's only on the receivable side, there's only a couple. I think it's the state liquor allocation and...
Highway users. One of the, one of the four highway users.
Yeah. So there's only a couple there that, that you could pull back in. I mean, like I said, it's going to throw one year's revenue off by that amount, but it's, you know, again, won't throw it off that much. But from then on, you're going to be, if you continue to do it right, you'll have it, so. So, again, overall, you know, good news for the county. All the, all the good news items, we're giving an unmodified opinion. There's, we're not, we haven't risen the management comments to a significant deficiency or material weakness. So unless you have questions, I'll open it to you.
No, glad to hear it. Commissioner?
I like a positive report. The streak is unbroken.
They really do a good job in preparing the annual report.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Thanks for the opportunity.
Appreciate your time.
Thanks for letting us join you.
Thank you.
I thought you'd have a tough question for Emily, so.
Well, we didn't want to scare her on the first time.
Is this my copy?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alex?
Good morning. Alex Hamilton, Chief Deputy, Van County Sheriff's Office. So just kind of an introduction, kind of what I'm presenting today is myself and Sheriff Manu. We're always trying to be innovative, and we're always trying to do what's best to serve our community in the law enforcement realm. And technology's always improving, and things are always getting better to helping us solve crimes. And so what I want to talk to you about today is license plate readers and a little bit how they could affect our county and our community. Recently, we were in a budget meeting, and I was kind of presenting this to be on our budget for next year, when it came up that you guys were interested in placing a couple of these license plate readers up at the Wellness Center, which I think is a great idea. Just to give you kind of a, I'll be a little bit more thorough on presenting this this time than I was last time, so you kind of understand how these license plate readers work. What they are is they're, they're cameras that are put on the roadside. They're, they're powered by solar power, so we don't have to directly line power to them. And what they do is, as every vehicle passes, it takes a picture of the side view of the vehicle, and then it takes a picture of the rear view of the vehicle, obviously taking a picture of the license plate. And this is huge knowledge and information to have if you're investigating crimes, because, for example, let's just cover a couple examples. Let's say we have an event up at the Wellness Center. Let's say a child's abducted. There is a database that goes along with these license plate readers. And what you can do is two ways. Either somebody can identify the license plate, you can enter that data in there, and it'll show that vehicle and when it was in the area, when it left that area. Or you can even just put a description of the vehicle, like a red Chevy Tahoe. And you could put that information in from that side view picture. It'll give, it'll pull all the Chevy Tahos that were red. And then you'll have the information from that vehicle of the license plate associated with that vehicle as it goes by. And, I mean, this would, obviously, you could see where this would, you know, hugely benefit us if we had a serious case like that. So like if, yeah, somebody abducted a child, and they're leaving, we're going to have their vehicle information, as long as, you know, just as simple as having a license plate or simply having a description of the vehicle. The technology's even getting so good now that, and you can, they can do this now too, is you could just put like a white truck with a ladder and the bed, and it'll pull up all the pictures of those vehicles like that. What's coming up, and this wouldn't be on the platform that I'm presenting that I would like you guys to do, but in the future, what the platform's going to look like is, it'll do people too. And there's portable license plate readers, LPRs, that we could put, like, let's say we're, our Fourth of July event up at the Wellness Center, we could put one of these portal ones up there. And let's say we have a missing child, we could just put a description of the clothing of the child, and it's going to pull up all the images of that child onto, onto, onto the system, so we'd be able to locate and find that child. And that's, right now, that's an extra cost, but that's soon coming to the main platform of this too. So we'll soon have more and more information that is going to get better. Also, another, just another example too, is also to the data for, for all over the place, like wanted people, wanted vehicles, it's entered into the system too. So if that passes one of our cameras, that's going to hit on to saying, hey, this guy that was just involved in a crime in northern Idaho drove by this area, and here they are. And this, if, if you watch a lot of, a lot of crime shows and stuff, there's a lot of crimes that are being solved with this in our modern times. Another thing to, for example, let's say we have a rash of car burglaries going on in our community. Let's say it's, there's some going on in Lava, there's some going on in McCammon, there's some going on here in Pocantello. If we have a suspect for that, we can get that suspect's license plate information. We can enter that, and that'll identify if he's, that person's been in those areas committing those crimes. Same thing, if a burglary is committed in a certain area, they leave that area. Once again, that can help us identify who that suspect in that crime was. Anyway, what my ask is today is, previously, we were asking for monies to be budgeted for this program for next year. But what my ask is today is that I would like to go ahead and proceed and purchase four of those cameras on this budget this year, and then use the, it's a two-year contract that we have to sign to get the, get these cameras, or these license plate readers. What I would like to propose is that we take the money that we proposed for next year to pay for the second year, and we go ahead and proceed and get four cameras this year. for the second year, and we go ahead and proceed and get four cameras this year. Let me kind of tell you how the database works. If we purchase two cameras, that gives us access to all the cameras in Bennett County. Right now, the city of Pocatello's already purchased 32 of these cameras.
Is that all the red dots on the map?
Yes. Yep, there's 32 of them. So if we just purchase two cameras, automatically, we have all the data and enter the database for all those cameras. If we purchase six cameras, I'm not asking for six, but if we purchase six cameras, we have nationwide database. What my, what I would like is present to you is that we purchased four in the county, and then I'm, have a meeting with Lab Hot Springs on the 14th of August that I would like to, I'm gonna try to propose that they-
It may not go-
Yeah, that's what I was kind of thinking. That's all right. I was like, yeah, it might not. No, I think, no, I think it's, that would be huge for that community, especially with all the out-of-state and out-of-town people around that community. That, that would be such a benefit to that community. So we're gonna try to get them to purchase two, and then we have that, those, enough, we have to spend 18,000 with the company, and that'll give you nationwide view, which is huge. And then we could just, we could track, like, let's say we know people are dealing drugs, and they're traveling clear down to Texas to pick up the drugs and come back. These cameras will hit them, and we can watch them all the way there and back, those kind of things. So it's really a good benefit. Just to give you, and speaking of Pocatello, let me give you some stats with them. They just did an audit this last April and May for 30 days of how their cameras worked. They had 1,073 custom hits, so actual things they're investigating, they had hits over 1,000 times. Other agencies across the country had 86 hits with their cameras to help investigate their crimes.
So, meaning they were able to pick up 86 hits from other states on crimes Pocatello was investigating?
Well, like, they're investigating a suspect, and he hit on our cameras-
Okay.
-in our system, yeah. So other agencies, 86 times.
So we shared data 86 times.
Yeah. And just, this is how much, and one of the reasons the cost, you have such, so much cost is really for the database, because this is how many images they did. 6,500 and, 6,528,000 images just in 30 days. And the database does a 30-day storage. That's, and then it falls off after that. Here's the crimes that, just in that 30-day, that the city of Pocatello solved using the LPRs. Driver arrested for resisting and obstructing, driver arrested on warrants, hit-and-run vehicle identified, arrested for, a driver arrested for possession of drug paraphernalia, arrested on a warrant for contraband, hit-and-run vehicle identified, arrested on a warrant and methamphetamine possession, hit-and-run vehicle identified and arrested for leaving the scene of an accident, occupant arrested for theft, driver arrested on a warrant, missing person located and removed from NCIC, hit-and-run vehicle identified. And that's just in a 30-day period of this audit that I'm reading from. One of the things is if, one of the advantages is if we do this now instead of waiting till next year, is we are gonna save $4,600 by, what, really what the company's offering. I mean, if we do it by September 26, it's gonna save $4,600. Let me just break down the cost for the LPRs for four of them, and this is, would be a two, two-year program, so both years, it's gonna be $14,000. But what you get for that is you get the license plate reader, they, they are waiving the installation fee for this, so that's huge. So we don't have to pay for all the poles to mount all these LPRs on, they're gonna cover all that. And one thing that you can do, and what I'm requesting that we do, we don't have to, we could save money by doing, but I think it would be really beneficial at the Wellness Center, is you can do live cameras on the poles, too. And normally, that's three, would be $3,000 for two of them up there, but they said they'd do it for us for, for the first two years for $1,000. And what that means is it'll read the license plates that are going through, it also has a live view of who's going through and the vehicles. So, once again, I mean, we have a child abduction, you know, they're going through, we get the license plate, then maybe we get some camera footage of scene inside the vehicle. But anyway, so that's another benefit. We're gonna save money if we do this now instead of waiting till next year. It'll cut that cost by two-thirds on having those live view cameras. We only want to do those up at the Wellness Center. The other two cameras we put in the county, we would not do those on.
Let me make it easy on you. I think we need six cameras. We need two up at the Wellness Complex, and we need four out in the county.
Okay.
And then go ahead and talk to Lab and see if they want to include something. But, but that's where I'm at, and let's, let's identify the funds.
You just had me at hello.
Oh, sorry. This is, this is huge. I mean, you, you have, there are cities that are like bigger than Pocatello, since they put in LPRs, have 100% solve rate on murders. That's how big these-
Oh, we don't want any murders.
So we do, we have one murder. Look at this cost compared to solving one murder, and that's just huge.
No, I just think that we need two up at the event center, and I need four.
So for this fiscal year, we can use county operations, or we can use contingency. The only problem we're gonna have is next year, there is only $14,000 budgeted in the sheriff's budget for this, so we would have to come up with-
$6,000 more.
Yeah, for next year, which we could do because we put in $100,000 in contingency for overages on ARPA projects. I can break that down, put $94,000, and then I could split that out and put $6,000.
Can we prepay that with some of this year's funds?
Will you find, will you check on that?
Um, yeah, I could, I could check. I don't know the answer, but I could check on that.
And see if we gave them $26,000 this year?
Yeah.
And then pay the remaining 13.
I don't, I don't see why not. It's a contract for two years, so I don't know why that would be a problem.
If we have the funds, I would say-
We would have-
Just do that.
Sufficient money between either of those two options.
Aye. And what I'll try to do is keep track of stats of how these are being effective and bring those back and present those to you.
That'd be great, 'cause Chief O'Hern brought back some stats from the software we helped him purchase for the ambulance district, and it was phenomenal, the data he was able to provide and give us to make decisions. So that would be great.
Okay. Anything else?
I'm just curious, this is just sole curiosity. On the pole that they mount these on, how high are they?
I had the same question.
So is it something that is high enough that it can't be vandalized, or is it low and hidden and tough and boxed away? What is it?
They're about, I would guess they're probably about eight foot tall. Like, if you could drive by ITD, look right in front of it when you drive, going up to the sheriff's office, there's one right there. And so they're all, if you be observing, you'll see them around town.
I'm thinking, so in all this complex, we have to get a little fake tree to hide it.
Seriously?
But I don't think you want it. I don't, but why hide it? I mean, it's a deterrent, I think. They see that we're doing that, that's gonna look just that itself.
Because they'll shoot it with a BB gun.
My biggest concern was-
Well, I don't believe I'm doing it, so.
My biggest concern was the snow removal. How close, how where, what? Don't make our drivers aware of where they're at.
And also, I talked to Scott Crowther, he says this was, he, he had already asked on, when we were doing the ARPA monies, to get some cameras up there. And anyway, he's having so much difficulty getting in, because on theirs, they wanna do a live wire to them, and it's not working. And these are, there's no live wire, we just, it's all solar panels, so it's gonna work, and-
So I do need to get with Shanda and see how much cost savings that's gonna be, because we'll pay some extra ARPA money that we'll need to reallocate. And maybe, depending on how much that is, maybe we use a couple thousand a bit towards this or something.
Okay. We already designated our funds for cameras, so.
Yeah. If it follows suit, it would just be a different figure, which doesn't matter.
Okay.
So.
Anything else?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Ladies.
Good job. We're excited.
Ashley?
Yes, right.
Hello.
Mr. James. Jason, Diet Child Court Administrator.
Ashley Brinkhurst, D6 Treatment.
And we're here with a request for an independent contract agreement for the commissioner's to sign, for Maya Mitten to be able to provide counseling, treatment, charting, and related services. Maya's been an employee with D6 for a while now, and, oh, I guess before we start and get into the details, we just wanted to thank Kristi, Jason, and Matt for all their work that they did on this to make this possible. But she's been a D6 employee for a while now, and she's moving away for approximately a year or so. And, and so she, we were requesting her to be able to do remote services for that, and she would be doing approximately 25 hours of direct services a week, and then about 15 hours of indirect services. And the contract would pay her about $30, would pay her $30 an hour for her direct services and 21 for the administrative services, which would total $55,848 a year, which would give us a cost savings. We had budgeted $66,000 for this contract, where we won't be paying her benefits. We'll see a reduction. All her hours will be, she'll be billing Medicaid, so we'll still be getting, or the courts, and so we'll still be getting reimbursements from that. And so we'll be able to cover all those costs by the work that she actually does. She'll be bringing in revenue.
Cool. All right. We talked about this before, so I don't have any-
We talked about this during budget, I'm just talking, so I'm, I'm good with it.
You okay, Ashley?
Yes.
I didn't want you to come and have to say anything, so.
It's okay. We've got a lot going on, so, just, so Jason was willing to help out today, so I appreciate it.
All right. Well, then I'd entertain a motion.
I'd take it. Make a motion, and we go ahead and approve the contract agreement with D6 and this employee.
Thank you so much.
All right. We have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Good luck. Continue doing great things.
Great. Thank you so much.
You bet.
Kyle.
Let's roll them on, just approve, approve, approve. Dang it, I'm just here for an update.
Kyle Brumister, Public Works Director. Thanks for the time that you gave us to be able to give an update, so we can kind of give you some information on what's going on. For some of the departments, noxious weed, we've been still going through with broadleaf. They're still working on road sides and, and facilities, doing broadleaf, trying to keep up with them. We've, Kosha is loving this dry, hot weather, and it's been one of our biggest things we're trying to battle this year.
It's trees.
Um, we're starting a little bit of fall sterilant. The cost share program was, we got the money and stuff a month or so ago, and they're doing a lot of work with that, trying to get that out to the public on their needs. And we're adding a little bit to our sterilant program in the Meek Creek area. We try to mow that, but the borrowed ditches are rocky and small, and we're worried about forest fires and how dry it is, so we're trying to make more and more of the area that we sterilize so far out for vision and safety, that we don't do as much mowing, but we don't have the, we usually get to them points, and when we're mowing them, it's dry, and, and so we're trying to be safe that way. But everything's been going great with that. Mosquito abatement, we've been lucky with our west Nile. We haven't had any in our traps yet. I know we've had some surrounding counties that have, have some, but we have not yet. With the warm weather again, we're, we're still battling mosquitoes. Jones has been working great. They've had a few things that they've learned along the summer, and, but it's been doing great. Snowmobile grooming, I know that's not a big thing at the moment, but we are working, which appreciate, you know, we're, I'm trying to work on all the agreements to try to get that before it's time. Been working a little bit with the board on trail markings and signage. They'll do some tree trimming, their volunteer groups and stuff, their snowmobile groups and stuff later this fall and things like that, trying to get the trails going, and everything we need to get that program, and working on the budget, I'm trying to figure out for the hauling the groomer around. Another thing with, kind of talking Forest Service, just in case you haven't been told yet, they're doing some logging in the Meek Creek area. So they'll be doing a logging section over by the Scout Mountain area, and so you'll see some log trucks start traveling that road more frequent.
There was a edict come down, came down yesterday, and there was a NACO meeting about it, and I missed it because I didn't think it applied to us. But anytime they're doing stuff like that, they're supposed to meet with the county, like on a regular basis, and talk about things like that.
Okay.
Let us know.
I can get with our new ranger there, which is Chris Scott. Have you got to meet him?
Not yet.
Yeah. He seems, I've talked to him a few times, he seems really good, and he's the one that took over for Kim. And so we've started to communicate, so I'll inform him.
I'll forward you this email, so you can see what the edict was.
Okay.
The order was, excuse me.
Because that is two pretty good-sized logging, so there'll be the one by Scout Mountain, and then there's another one over by Elk Meadows, which is kind of more to the west.
Yeah.
They're doing them in the late fall/winter-ish time, 'cause the only, when they asked me about it, I said the only thing that I could see, 'cause we were talking about the road conditions and when to do it, and like if it's, can't do it in the spring and have breakup and different aspects like that, but they're looking at doing it when the roads are froze and everything. But I also told him about our snowmobile grooming, 'cause the one up on the other side to the west will conflict with grooming trails, but they feel that they'll be out of there before we get enough snow to groom. Because I don't think the people buying stickers want their grooming trails closed down for logging, so.
Those are extra money for pil, for logging?
SRS.
SRS.
But yeah, there's a few things going on there. Then on Roden Bridge, we have finished our, they're, well, they're finishing it today. A couple little spots are fogging, so if you are driving around the chubby kind of area, you'll see a lot of black, new black, nice roads. They're gonna be painted here in the next couple of weeks, and they're looking really good. Our new chipper worked really good. We had to do some changes for our trucks, hooking to the new machine and stuff, a few little things as we went, but we've got it all tuned in, and it's working really good. A lot of less wasted chips. We did do the two miles, around two miles for chubby, that went really well. I appreciate them working really good with us to get that done, as they even closed the road and made it as easy as we could. But them are kind of some of our busiest roads to work on, and so everything went well. We did have, we did have one accident throughout that project, and we're dealing with that. And one of the things we're doing right now is, we do have GPS units and stuff on our stuff, but that's all they are, is GPS. We have a trial thing we're doing for a month with a new place, that they actually have the camera and the GPS, and a few more for real close to the same price, so we're seeing how that works. They were wanting us to add them to our machines, and I think we've got five of them that we're trying out, so that you can do a few different things. Kind of like Alex was saying, it's funny how technology, it's amazing anymore, but you can, I know the cities are using it a lot in some of their vehicles, and, and Bingham County uses it in all of theirs. But you can have it, you can either have it inside and out cameras, but like say the incident we had with a truck, one of our dump trucks got into a collision, the first thing like the officers are, do you have cameras? You know, because that makes everything easy. So we're looking, and if we can get them, and these would be a better unit for around the same price and stuff like that, we're kind of testing that out. So that's kind of interesting. It, it'll do, you can go back, kind of like these cam, cameras that we're installing now, and you can go back in time and have the video. If any sudden movement or anything like that, it'll placemark it, so you can go right to it. If they suddenly stop, or they're doing a corner too sharp or something like that, it's pretty neat to, to see, but I'll let you know how that kind of goes. And we're gonna be starting our paving next- And we're going to be starting our paving next week and we do have, we're doing Siphon Road, Fairgrounds, DK Lodge, Corey Lane, Old Skyline in Portnough, that's five and a half miles altogether. Some of the things coming up, the Fairgrounds, we held off a year because we were hoping something would go with the city, there's, don't look like that, so we're just gonna, we're gonna get that fixed up this year. Siphon Road, I know there's concerns out there with, with the gravel pits and stuff, that's the area that I'm talking, that we're going to pave. I have talked to them quite a bit, I know they're getting a meeting set up, but on things that we can do, and there's only certain things I can do, and one of them is I'll make sure the road, we're going to pave that section, just to make sure we have it, that the road's in tip-top shape. And then also another thing I could do is, that we're going to do, is we're going to add to the shoulders, instead of a two-foot shoulder, we'll have a four-foot shoulder, makes things safer if somebody's jogging or walking or something like that. Them are some of the things we are doing this, this year on that road.
But we're doing them just because that's the right thing to do, not because of any permits.
Yeah, and, and that's what we do when we start to see more and more usage, because all this maintenance we do is kind of based off of usage. So, like I say, the county has two track roads, dirt roads, gravel roads, and it's all based on usage. If there's two rabbits and three cars that travel the road, it might not get quite as much as another road, but.
Get that third rabbit.
I know, get that third rabbit. I mean, if it's a good year and there's, there's lots of new baby rabbits, we might have to look at it, but, but that's kind of what it's based off of, and that's what we're looking at on this road, is just as things get more productive in an area, what can we do? Same thing as, we're looking at some deals with the Inman Road with more and more houses getting built on there and also like Jackson Creek and some of them as they go, what can we do to make this safe? And as people build subdivisions and stuff like that, that what part do they have with And last, kind of, we had an old, a covert on the old highway, we, I'd like to thank Emma for helping with the public outreach with that. We did all the social medias, contacts, everything, I think it went pretty smooth because we closed the old highway for almost a full day, right at Upper Rock Creek. We only had a couple complaints, but it, it's hard to get.
It's a busy road right now.
It's hard.
If you only get a couple of complaints, you're good.
Yeah, it, it's hard to get everybody to acknowledge that they know and stuff like that, but we did have all the detours set up and everything and tried to make it as convenient for them as we could, but we got a new pipe in there that worked out good. Other than that, do you have any questions on?
No, that order I was talking about was for Gateway Communities, that's why I didn't go, because it was primarily geared towards communities that are bordering national parks.
Oh.
So that's why I didn't go, but it's, I think that it might carry over a little bit to what we're talking about here, so just.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm sure with the changes in there that I'm sure they'll be getting, probably coming to introduce and get with the Commission.
I sent you that, so you're just aware.
Okay.
Okay. Just a couple things, I talked to you about the building where Scott's office is, looks like the 20th is when that needs to be taken care of probably. The actual teardown of the building is in the contract, but it's the asbestos part of it that wasn't in the contract that they're looking at, so we're still looking to see what money we could save and if rather we have these guys tear that house down and haul it to the landfill, or rather we still go through the other group. So that's somewhere around the 20th. And then the second thing that I want to talk to you about is weed, we're going to move them under the Commission.
The what?
The weed department, directly under the Commission. We didn't talk about an effective date.
No.
We can make it tomorrow, the month, start the month off with it that way, but, but in conversation, we'd like to move them under us directly so that we have better communication directly with the weed department. Do you have any questions, comments about that?
No, I, is there a problem with it?
Just communications, just we want that department to direct, we get a few calls and that's one of the areas, and so when we was talking budget and stuff, we felt like that's an area that we need to, to have direct communication with.
Okay, so then, I guess for the road sides and all that, then we would contact you for that?
Well, we'll make, we'll make a supervisor or a superintendent or however, we change the title and put an individual over that department that will report directly to the Commissioners.
But he, one of the things we talked about is having them mow?
Yeah, yeah, the mowing, the roads would still be yours and so you'd work with this individual on spraying where your needs are, what your needs are, just like Scott does with you and stuff. Every, every county property, if, if there's something special besides, but the general direction for weeds, we want them to come and communicate with us.
Okay.
Okay. You had on here about the gas.
Oh yeah, that was the second thing.
Yeah, second thing.
So, we're having some, we had our gas system, all the software stuff, the electronics of it is getting pretty old. We had it kind of going out on us in McCammon and we got that repaired. They're pretty costly for these software and the electronics. When we had that replaced, we had them look at the stuff in, in, here in Pocatello and it was, they were like, "Well, we're hoping you, you can maybe keep going, we've had a few problems with it, but it just keeps getting worse and worse." We had them look at it again, some of the problems we're seeing is, because we need an update. So what we kind of did is did a real quick, what I guess my concern and what I wanted to talk to you about today was if all of a sudden they go down, you know, that we have a contingency plan for that. So if we had them replace, all of the parts and pieces are, what you have is a little over 18,000, that doesn't include electrical, having an electrician put some of the stuff in, which they said could be up to a 10,000. I, I would think we had a lot of that stuff already kind of in there, but that's kind of what we've got for a, worst case scenario, we'd be looking at, you know, like 28,000, somewhere in there. I just wanted to have something on the funding end if, or how, how you would like to proceed, because if it just went down, we have a lot of people that use that, so I, I didn't want to come in as an emergency to you guys, I wanted to kind of start planning for it.
And there's, there's already been some delays when people go get fuel, it shuts off, stuff like that. Our sheriff deputies don't have another option to go get fuel.
Correct.
Some people do. So right now where we're rolling forward the roof for the Roden Bridge, that amount of money, we could utilize those capital funds and just get this done right now so that we don't have that continued issue, and then it doesn't become an emergency situation, we can be a little more proactive on it. So if you would be good with that, we've already got the 500 in the Commission proposed for next year, it's just using reserves of this amount of money, which we should be fine to do, there are sufficient funds.
You think you're comfortable with that?
I am, and I think it's a good action because, you know, what do you do when you've got a sheriff deputy that needs to go fill up and, and the pumps are down?
Yeah.
They have to be on shift.
My, my only question is, none of this is going to be affected with the remodel we're going to do out there? The pumps, the gas tanks, none of that's in?
It's a standalone system.
No, I just, I just wanted to make sure.
We didn't want to pave, we want to unpave it.
Yeah.
Yes, no, this will, yes, this will stay.
Yeah, Kyle talked to me about this last night and I told him to bring it forward, I thought it was a good to have a discussion today, so I'm glad you talked to Christian.
If we've identified the funds, I, let's do it, before it becomes an emergency.
So this invoice you have here is just for the 18-1, do you want to do something else that shows the, the full amount you talked about, or what would you like to do?
Yeah, we hadn't.
Up to 30,000.
I would.
Up to 30?
Up to 30, if we could, yeah, we didn't, because that's the part is, they don't get the electrician, so we would have to, you know, go, and we haven't went through that part of.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve upgrading the fuel system for up to $30,000 to be taken out of?
Capital in Roden Bridge.
Capital in Roden Bridge.
Okay.
Okay.
Perfect.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks Kyle. Krista Klauser.
Mr. Klauser, Comp Controller, first item I have for the board is Idaho Department of Labor, labor, it's the unemployment, and Matthew, I've got to apologize, I was going to email this to you yesterday and I didn't. Right now we've used the whole credit that we had, so the total bill for the quarter is $6,656.94. $363 is going towards a juvenile probation position, $6,383 towards a jail position, prior position, a credit of $529 for a prior coroner position, and then $440 for a district court position. And that makes your total, if you are good with that, if you will just sign it for me and then we will get that paid.
Uh, any questions?
I'd make a motion then that we go ahead and sign this, Workers' Comp, is that what it is, no, unemployment report.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye. The second item I have for the board is just the quarterly update for budget to actuals, revenue and expenditures, I put together per Commissioner Huff's request, a summary. I would have had this to you sooner, however, I did not get it done until last night. So those are the copies, if you would pass those down. When you look at the revenue report, I do not have the budget in for property taxes, so it looks like we are doing amazing in collections. We are still doing good in collections, however, once you add in that property tax amount, that changes a little bit, so I can get those entries in real quick and resend that to you if you would like. The summary of that information is, most of our funds are going to be adequate for receiving, or, sorry, we're going to meet revenue. I have a couple departments that I'm watching, Roden Bridge, Highway Users is not coming in like I had originally anticipated, but I did get an update from Jason yesterday that was sent out on what our current dollar amounts are, so I just need to project that in. We didn't receive those dollars until July, so this is not included in these totals. And July isn't done yet, so I can't put those numbers in to see where we're at, but that will let me know if we're going to make collections or not. And then Indigent, when we set that revenue for, or that revenue budget last year, I was still under the assumption that public defenders, cases, anything prior to 9/30, we were still going to get reimbursements on, that is not the case.
That is not the case.
No. The state is receiving all of those dollars. We do have a little bit of collections, but they're one-off circumstances and not very much money. So I think I budgeted 91,000 in there, we're not going to get that. I've already taken that into account for next year's revenue projections and that's why we're going to be a little bit short, and we did the changes that we made for FY26. So those are, that's the highlight for revenue. Basically, most of our smaller funds receive property taxes, sales tax, excess sales tax, and all of those are coming in, great, because excess sales tax is a lot higher than I had anticipated. Any questions on revenue? Okay, expenditures, we should be around 75% for our normal departments, however, we do have a few departments that are seasonal or have large purchases that, that kind of skew that. If you look at the benefit side, we did not make our second half payment, so that is throwing that percentage lower than it should be. That was paid in July. Next year we'll get more consistent and have that paid sooner in the year like we're supposed to. If you have an apartment that has large one-time purchases like IT.
Yeah.
They're going to look a lot higher than the 75%.
Adam talked about that earlier, because of the bunch of subscriptions we're due.
Yep, in fact, he is, I'd have to double check, but he is like 95% right now, and that's why, just because of his. Then we have departments that are going to have some unspent capital funds, the coroner's budget from Bridge, and the landfill because of the scale house, so those are going to look extremely lower than they should, and that's why, is because we're not spending those dollars this year, they're rolling forward to next year. We have departments that are more seasonal, fair operations, weed, mosquito, they're going to be a little bit lower if you look at their percentage, and it's just because we really haven't, as of June, gotten into their expenditures. We have a couple departments under 75% that I need to look at why, the assessor's office, but I think that's because they haven't done some of the trainings that they would normally do. Fair maintenance, for some reason, is really low. They have been for the last couple of years, so they're just not utilizing the budget that they've been given.
We'll have a better discussion with them on that.
And that might be something I could talk to him about, I know we had a couple meetings where.
New facility.
They weren't really sure that they could spend money, at least the maintenance person wasn't, so I don't know if that's been cleared up or if we need to have another discussion with them. For some reason Veterans Memorial did not turn in any invoices for the month of June. I don't know if they think they're cut off right now, but they're not, so if they have needs, they need to get that money spent, because this is going to be the next couple of months, so one of the Commissioners.
I'll make contact with them on that.
Okay. We do have one department that's over budget, Junior College, that's $500. That one's just hard to estimate, last year I think they only spent 25,000, they're at 40,500. There are reserves to cover it, but that's the only one that's even close this year. And then health insurance, right now we're sitting at 83%, we might be okay for the remaining three months. If not, we do have revenue that's exceeding budget right now, that if we needed to, we could open it, but I'll just continue to watch that. If we open a budget, it's done initially the first part of September, so.
Thank you for this, I appreciate that very much.
That's all.
There was a, there was a FY25 EM SAVE sub grant?
Oh yes.
Just changing the names on it?
Yep, basically Health and Welfare used to be the overseer of this grant and now it's Idaho Military Division, so that's what this.
Yeah, because statutorily they moved that over there, right?
Yes, and so that's what this contract is, everything else is the same, it's just changing that oversight committee or group.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve a signature on the FY25 EMS, EM SAVE sub grant.
Okay, we have a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and with that, we're to the claims agenda, any questions, comments, or concerns on the claims agenda? Okay, all in favor of approving the claims agenda, say aye.
Aye.
With that, we are adjourned for the.